Welcome, everyone. Today is the fifteenth of October 2019. The time is 6:30. And we'll begin our city council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance if you'll rise and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, we'll have a roll call.
Harrington.
Here.
McKinney, absent. O'Doherty.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Stalder.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Gabriel.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
That's eight present and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. We begin our city council meetings as we do our work sessions with public comment. Public comment is on non-agenda items. If there's anyone here that has something that's not on the agenda, you're welcome to come forward. As you can see, we have a timer. You have three minutes, and I'll remind you when your three minutes are up. But you're welcome to come forward and speak on any topic that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make public comments? Seeing none, I will close this public comment. Period. Next thing is the considerations of changes on the agenda or setting the agenda. I'll turn the time over to Vice Mayor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that the agenda be set as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved in second by Councilor Schuster. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the agenda then has been set. The next item we have is proclamations, and we're going to begin. Now, let me just say that tonight we have four proclamations. The city council, I try to make sure that we have people that have been working diligently on different projects get an opportunity to read some of these proclamations because they're so important. I want them to also recognize the people that have worked on this and recognize the council for working on these different projects. The first item, the first proclamation which we have is on the Clean Water Appreciation Month, and that is Councilor Harrington.
Thank you. Mayor, whereas the city of Laramie and Albany County are fortunate to enjoy nearly pristine sources of drinking water, whereas we recognize that naturally clean drinking water is a rarity in today's world and careful stewardship is necessary to protect this precious resource, whereas we recognize that clean water is essential to support economic development and the quality of life in our community, whereas Albany County Clean Water Advocates have undertaken projects to promote public awareness of the need to protect our drinking water supplies, therefore be it resolved that I, Brian Harrington, acting on behalf of the mayor and president of the governing body of the city of Laramie, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Clean Water Appreciation Month. And I would like to invite Sarah Goran, as well as Bill Schott and Paul Beckett from Water Treatment House.
Bring everybody up?
Yeah, everybody from Clean Water Advocates to join as well.
Sure.
Sarah, was there anyone that you wanted to make comments?
I thought I'd introduce a video.
Okay, we'll do that. That would be perfect.
Do the picture and then have...
Come on up. We're going to have a picture with the council. Need a wide-angle lens, Sally.
Everybody squeeze in.
Thank you so much.
I hope so.
And then Sarah, I would invite you to make some comments and introduce the video as well.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilors. And to thank you so much for this proclamation recognizing Clean Water Appreciation Month. And I want to say a special thank you to the folks here who work for the city, who bring this clean water to our houses every single day. So, thank you so much. I also want to share with you our aquifer education video. It's available on our website at albanycountycleanwateradvocates.org and also on Facebook. Please feel free to share it. And I want to thank filmmaker Mike Venata of Square State Films, who went above and beyond on this project with us. And without further ado, thank you.
Water is life. It sustains us and it is integral in all living things. And it really is the reason why we're all here. It's our lifeblood. It's the most important element that we get to enjoy. It gives us our form. It gives us our understanding of who we are. It's a vital part of our ecosystem. It's essential.
An aquifer is one of those mysteries of the natural world that stores water and transmits water in the dark, outside of everybody's awareness. Surface water, you can see. Groundwater just happens 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for thousands and thousands a year, and nobody knows about it. When you stop to think about, here's a drop of water filling my glass. Well, let's just swim upstream. We go up that pipe and up that pipe and down here, and pretty soon we end up in a city well, and then we end up in the Casper Aquifer. And then we keep swimming upstream. Pretty soon, we're back at the surface, and then pretty soon, we're a raindrop going up into a big thunderstorm like we see on a hot July afternoon. You can look up here in January to the range to the east of town and see all those snowdrifts. Well, that's the water that's going to be coming out of your tap here in two, five, 10, 15 years. I think a lot of people have a hard time envisioning underground water because they'll refer to it as a river underground, but it's really more like a giant sponge down there. The sponge is composed of rock, sand particles. The spaces in between those grains fills with water. And when we drill down and put our wells in, extract water, that's coming out of an It will absorb materials that are filled on its surface. The Casper is a little bit more than a sponge because imagine that sponge being cut up into a bunch of vertical little pieces, so it's little discrete sponges that are sort of cobbled together. The only manifestation that something is going on underground is when it popped up to the ground surface like springs. Well, the beauty of Laramie situation is the old cowboy saying of, "Don't drink downstream from the herd." Well, we are upstream from all of the herds that extend from here to the Gulf of Mexico, and that's a unique and precious position to be in. The reason our water is so clean is simply because it is that snowmelt and rainfall that you can see right there. It didn't wander across the countryside and through 15 different cities' water treatment plants. We're getting the thing right straight out of the clouds. It has not had an opportunity to be contaminated, to get dirty, which many of us would say gives it a better taste. But the reason that we are in a particularly favorable position is simply that we are above the herd. We're near the top where this water came from. One serious threat to groundwater quality here is the I-80 transportation corridor. And we're always surrounded by tanker trucks with, you never know what's inside. If they were to crash and roll over and have a spill, then all of that material could easily and quickly enter the groundwater aquifer and contaminate our water supply. Some of the biggest sources of pollutants out in the county are septic tank leach fields, where we flush our toilets and let our laundry loads of water go down the drain out to septic tanks that then drain out to leach fields. And they all are designed to bring the wastewater down into the ground. And in addition, sometimes over fertilizing in agricultural areas or at a golf course, cleaning products, household cleaning products that people use out in the county, they all end up in your septic tank leach field systems and have the potential to make their way down to groundwater. Thankfully, we've evolved to establishing an awareness of what the aquifer is, how it's put together, and why, and how it's vulnerable. Thankfully, the level of development on the recharge area is not extensive, and we have that opportunity to protect the commons here consciously before things really, you know, just go in directions that we, in the future, just say, "Boy, I wish we hadn't done that." Have the opportunity here in Laramie for employment, for shopping, for all of the assets that a community brings, and we are participants in that community, whether we live physically within the geographic boundaries of the city or not. And we all need to recognize our responsibilities to one another, I think, to protect these natural resources upon which we all depend.
To not take care of it would be wholly irresponsible, knowing that not everybody gets the fresh, clean water that we do. I think water is essential to who we are as human beings, and we should respect it because it truly is life.
Again, I want to thank all those that prepared this wonderful presentation for us, all those that worked so hard to keep our most precious resource safe. And I, again, you know, this is just a small token of our appreciation for the work that you do. Thank you again. The next item that we have, it's my privilege to have a proclamation for a dear friend of ours. This is a proclamation that was brought to us to recognize a former community leader, continues to be a community leader, but someone that served on the council with many of us, and we wanted to recognize Klaus Hansen as he turns 80 years old. Is it okay to say that, Klaus?
It was yesterday.
And he's fresh back from Hawaii, so he's glowing. Anyway, let me read this without getting myself in any more trouble. Whereas Klaus Hansen has served on the city council of Laramie for over 16 years, and whereas he has supported direct actions to assist interfaith Good Samaritan and other organizations that help those in need, and whereas he has offered consistent vision and peacemaking and tolerance for diversity around the world, and whereas in honoring his 16 years of supporting diversity, his history of giving voice to the voiceless, his ability to address complex issues with compassion, and his persistent ability to seek a bridge of understanding, therefore we offer gratitude to our local leader who bears witness to the humanity of us all, and now therefore be it resolved that I, Joe Shumway, acting as mayor and president of the governing body of the city of Laramie, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim Klaus Hansen as ambassador of goodwill. Again, encourage residents to recognize the positive impact that Klaus has done for the Laramie community, to thank him for his generosity, and to encourage others to find ways to give back to the community. So, Mr. Hansen, would you and Sally Palmer come forward? And I think, Reverend Palmer, you had something you wanted to say. And then Klaus, of course, we can't let you leave without saying something to us.
I'll say something, yes.
No, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
You have, you deserve who you are to serve this place where you live.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Oh, right. Nice picture. Since I left city council, I've been pretty much a slacker, and I haven't really done very much except taking, helping take care of grandchildren, which is a very honorable job, I've been told. And the only thing I still do for the community is I donate blood. And I was wearing my shirt today, and I go over to Cheyenne because I also give plasma because my most valuable quality is a rare blood type. I'm B-negative, and they keep on calling me and say, "We have had another accident. Would you please come down and donate blood for this person?" So, thank you very much. I feel very much honored. It's really much beyond what I deserve, except for the blood that I give. Thank you. Thank you. One more thing. My favorite person in life has always been Martin Luther, who would say, "Get up, open your trap, and shut up."
Thank you. Okay. Oh, Klaus, would you come forward with Sally, and we're going to get a picture, and then I want to present to you this proclamation.
Thank you.
The reason I'm here is because I'm almost cause of age.
I'll stay up here. We're going to get pictures.
All right, one, two, three.
You got to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I seem to have to stand up.
He's spent a considerable amount of time in this room.
Klaus, you're celebrating Disability Month, too. Get him back in here.
Nice try. All right. Our next proclamation, I've asked Councilor Doherty to read this. This is the Proclamation on Disability Employment Awareness Month. Councilor Doherty.
Whereas disability in no way diminishes the right of individuals to work independently, enjoy self-determination, make choices, contribute to society, and experience the economic, political, social, cultural, and educational mainstream of American society, and whereas the goals of this city include providing awareness about disability employment issues and celebrate many and varied contribution individuals with disabilities provide to the workplace, and whereas the value and talent of these individuals add to the workplace and the community, and whereas thousands of Wyomingites face challenges with disabilities daily, whereas the month of October has been designated as Disability Employment Awareness Month to celebrate and recognize disabled individuals and promote awareness in the workplace. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Erin O'Doherty, on behalf of Joe Shumway, acting as mayor and president of the governing body of the city of Laramie, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim October 2019 as Disability Employment Awareness Month in this city and encourage all citizens, businesses, public and private agencies, religious and educational institutions to join in observing the month in honor of persons with disability. Dated and signed, October 15, 2019, Mayor Joe Shumway. So, could Joe, Carol, Rob, Jasmine Parton, and Sam Burkett please mark so we can view this proclamation?
That was a fluke.
She said it was a water bottle. We'll go for that.
Just one thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you wanted to say, sorry. Do you want me to move it back? No, that's okay.
I just wanted to say we had a wonderful presentation on the preservation of our natural resource of water in this area. There's another resource, human resources, that for many years was not totally recognized. And I think those times are changing, and we have proclamations and other things going on in our community that recognize that that change is way overdue.
Can we lower that? Sam, I understand you're going to a national conference for disabilities soon?
Yes.
Why don't you step up to the microphone and just say whatever you want to?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Councilor Shumway, and thank you, everyone. Well, first, before I get into the conference stuff, I just want to say, my mother has worked for almost 30, she's worked for 30 years for the National Forest Service doing waters and streams, and I just want to say my deepest heart for working. I want to give a shout to my mom just saying that I love her and that she's did a very good job of raising me and my two brothers, and that she's done a very good job. She knows what she's doing in the water industry. She's, and she's looking into retirement in December of next year. So, just want to say kudos to her. And since it's Disability Employment Month, me and two other people over at Wyoming Panel Living have been invited to a national conference in Grand Rapids, Michigan. It's the April Conference, the Associate Program of Rural Independent Living. Since Wyoming is a rural state, you could say, I think this is a perfect opportunity for us to go down and represent our state to the nation of who we are. And just want to say thanks again to my mom for this. That presentation was, is really important, and so glad that we get to have our clean water from where she does her studies from.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys get this down. Can I, Sam, can I?
Sam wants it for a scratch.
Can I just come in?
I was going to pass.
Okay. So, how do you, it's just a diagonal. Erin. Yeah, yeah. Well, should I just point that one? It would take me a while to get down there, so I'll just be right here. I want to point out that Sam's mom is a fluvial diomorphologist, just so you...
All right, one, two, three. My phone here really quick, sorry. One, two, three.
Our fourth and final proclamation is by Councilor Brian Schuster, and this is on the Community Planning Month. Councilor Schuster.
Thank you very much. I'm on the planning commission, so I asked if I could do this one. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, and whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in the planning and planning implementation, and whereas the month of October is designated as the National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and planning implementation make to the quality of our settlements and environments, and whereas, excuse me, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and the dedication of all members of the planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and experience to the improvement of Laramie, Wyoming, and whereas we recognize the many valued contributions made by professional community and regional planners of Laramie, Wyoming, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to the public service by these professionals. Now for, now therefore be it resolved that the month of October 2019 is hereby designated as Community Planning Month in the city of Laramie, Wyoming, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. In witness, therefore, I, Representative of Joe Shumway, here unto set my hand and cause the official seal of the Laramie to be affixedated this 15th day of October 2019, and is signed by Joe Shumway, our mayor, and also Nancy Bartholomew. And I believe this goes to Derek. Please come up and say something, and we will give you your proclamation.
And our thanks.
And you'll just take it and run, huh?
Mayor and councilor, let's make a brief. You know, Laramie is a great community. The community really cares about what its future is going to be. We see that not only from its citizens, but from its elected officials. We care about what we're leaving for the next generation, and I think that's, we're seeing that through the planning efforts that we see that come before you and come before our different elected officials, whether it's our planning commission, even our county bodies. We also see planning initiatives taken on by the public, which is equally as important as professionals working on these planning initiatives that do great things for our community. And so, I think Laramie is a very supportive community of planning, and I think that that is indicative of what you see going on in the community today and what we'll see in the future for my kids and your kids and grandkids. And so, just with that, I think, thank you for it, and keep planning.
Thank you. Now, we have asked the city clerk if she would read the notice of the public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that on the 17th day of September 2019, a complete application was received in the office of the city clerk for a new bar and grill liquor license, number BG-9, for Accomplice Laramie LLC doing business as Accomplice Microbrew, or, excuse me, Micropub at 301 East Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Public hearing to hear comments or protest relative to this liquor, this license application will be held Tuesday, October 15, 2019, at 6:30 PM in council chambers of City Hall. Action on this application will be considered at the regular meeting of the city council on Tuesday, October 15, 2019, at 6:30 PM in council chambers.
Thank you. So, at this time, if there's anyone that would like to come forward to make any comments for or against the application of this bar and grill liquor license, this is your opportunity to do so. Yes, please come forward. And as you do, would you please just give us your name and then also sign on there? Yes, good. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Greg Grisham, and I'm going to be one of the part owners of the Accomplice Micropub and also the Good Egg. And I'm just coming forward to answer any questions anybody might have. I know there have been some. And just to show my support, let you know, I've been living in town here for 15 years. I've tried to help out around the community. I love Laramie, got my kids here, and I'm really looking forward to getting this going. It's been a lot of hard work, but it's going to be worth it once we're all done. So, if anybody has any questions for me, I'd... So, if anybody has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, those questions will probably come during the regular agenda when this item comes up.
Then I should go sit down, probably.
Is there anything else you want to say?
Not really. Um, you know, like, I just said everything, you know, I wanted to say. I'm really happy to be up here, and like I said, I'm always open if anybody has any questions about anything, but, yeah.
There may be some, so thank you.
Okay, cool.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else that would like to speak in regards to this application, or bar and grill license? Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing. Next, we have announcements. City manager?
Mayor and council, we have two announcements. The first is some good news, and I believe Derek Tany, our planning manager, needs to come back up and share with you an award that was received.
Mayor and council, so, on, in Community Planning Month, we were, the city is part of an organization with myself as a member, board member, and our other staff always part of what's called Wyopass. And Wyopass is a Wyoming planning organization. It's made up of city and county planners, as well as city and county officials who are interested in planning. Each year, we do different events, mainly a spring workshop, which is focused on improving your process and improving the process of planning, specifically with your planning commission. And then, in the fall, we have a, an educational conference that, that, during that time, where we do continuing education, presentations, we're learning about what other people are doing in the state and in the region. And during that conference, one of the things that we do is we do do awards. One of the awards the city of Laramie was nominated for and we received, which was the Urban Planning Award. So, it goes to the Urban Planning Project of the Year for Wyoming, and that project was the North Fourth Street Plan that was developed by this council, as well as the two interns that worked in my office. If you remember, you all did some of those charrettes, you were putting pieces on there, trying to envision what the process was. Through that project, really few things to point out. One, it was a great visioning exercise. It allowed council and our public to participate in a process that we don't always get to do. Number two, it provided us an opportunity to give experience to new professionals coming into the planning profession and give them experience that they would not be able to get anywhere else. Both of those interns, just so you do know, they both have jobs, partially based upon some of their internship work, which is great. It's always a key thing. But, two, I just want to point out that this is something I think that's important for the council, too, is that, you know, the efforts that we put in, the hours that we're doing, work sessions, trying to come up with a plan for whether it's a piece of property or aquifer, or maybe in the future, like, a new comprehensive plan, all those things are really important. And so, the Wyoming Planning Association recognized you, and so, we have an award here that will go up with some of the other awards that we've won over the years, just over in the city annex. And so, just pat yourselves on the back. It was a good process, and it's, a lot of communities are looking towards what we do as a benchmark for how to do it right. And so, I think that's important for you to also understand. So, with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, and then, one other announcement regarding recreation opportunities.
Honorable mayor, city council, first point that I'd like to make for you is today, we actually opened up the Undine Park Pickleball Courts. The final nets got placed this morning, and they were open for play, and by eleven o'clock this morning, there were folks playing pickleball on the four-court complex that's going on over there. One other piece that I'd like to announce is that this Friday, from six to eight PM, is Pumpkin Duncan, presented by Iverson Memorial Hospital, is our sponsor this year. Pumpkin decorating, floating with pumpkins, pumpkins, creepy cupcake walk, and free popcorn. So, make sure you go the regular this Friday between six and eight for Pumpkin Dunk, Pumpkin Duncan. Be happy to answer any questions.
Councilor Weaver?
Mr. Mayor, I'm curious, is there a winter pickleball league for outdoor pickleball?
Honorable mayor, Terry Lund, who was here tonight for the clean water advocates, she wrote me an email today, hoping for a long Indian summer, so we'll see what happens.
We all hope so. Thank you.
And Pat, and a former city councilman, will probably be out there trying it out?
Yep, yep.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Poligus.
He's a big fan.
He is a big fan of that.
Good sport. All right, thank you. Any other announcements? I think just the two? Okay. Next item we have is, do we have any, oh, let's see, monthly staff recognition?
Thank you, council. So, we have for many, many years now recognized what we call our Rock Star of the Month, really, an Employee of the Month. However, council had asked recently that we invite the monthly employee to have an opportunity to come and meet you all. And so, I'd like to introduce Chris Ruiz. He's with us this evening. Chris is an IT analyst for the city of Laramie. He was nominated by a coworker in the fire department to be our Employee of the Month. I wanted to share with you that Chris also recently received a state-level recognition through the Public Safety Communications Technologist, or, excuse me, the reward, the award he received was the Public Safety Communications Technologist of the Year. That is a mouthful. That was awarded by the Wyoming Association of Public Safety Telecommunications Organizations, or APOCO, if you would like another government acronym in your, in your vocabulary. I also wanted to share with you, in reading Chris's profile in our employee newsletter, I thought, this really struck me, and so I thought I'd share it with all of you, and was a good reminder for me. He said, "Your attitude can create a profound impact on others." And so, I appreciated reading that, I appreciate his recognition of that, and he has created a profound impact amongst city of Laramie staff. So, come on up, Chris, and say hello to the city council. Welcome.
Honorable mayor, council, thank you so much for the recognition. I really appreciate the, the recognition. To me, information technology is about enabling city staff and our users to really give back to the community, to, you know, get the most out of that and make sure they deliver that exceptional service to our citizens. So, you know, I kind of come into that with, come into work with that mentality every day, you know? It's, it's a wide impact that we have on our users and our, our community. So, it's a really special place to work for. I don't think I need to tell you that. It's absolutely fantastic, so I appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
All right. Want to thank our staff for bringing forward rock stars, our outstanding employees. We probably don't have enough months to recognize all of them, but appreciate the ones that are nominated and receive this recognition. All right, now, are there any disclosures from anyone on the city council on any of the items that we have that they would have a conflict of interest in? Seeing none, I'll turn the time back to our vice mayor, Gabriel, to, through the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, mayor. I would move that the consent agenda be approved, that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second?
It's been moved in second by Councilor Pierce. We have roll call.
Harrington?
Yes.
McKinney, absent? O'Doherty?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, your honor.
All right, thank you. So, the consent agenda has been approved. Now, we move to the regular agenda. The first item on the regular agenda is item number eleven. Councilor Schuster?
Thank you. The title is Little Ver, Little Valley Subdivision Preliminary Platte. I move to postpone the Little Valley Subdivision Preliminary Platte to the November fifth city council regular agenda meeting.
Second.
Do we need to bring it on the floor before we move to postpone? Oh, is that the way it is?
That's the way it is.
It is, the, the motion as it stands right now is the main motion, so it's okay as it stands.
Okay, so it's been moved in second by Councilor, or Vice Mayor Gabriel, right? Okay. So, that's, is there anyone that would like to make any comments regarding postponement of this to the date, which was November second?
Fifth.
Fifth, okay. Any discussion on that? Any discussion from anyone in the public? Seeing none, we'll go to the roll call on postponement.
Harrington?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
McKinney, absent? Stalder?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway? That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, your honor.
Okay, so that motion has been approved. Next item is item number twelve, Councilor Schuster.
And I've got a really busy one tonight, because I've got these tough ones here. The title is Original Ordinance Number 2004 Vacating the Entirety of the Undevelopment Right-of-Way Running North-South Along Block 119 Lots 1 and 5, Block 120 of the West Laramie Subdivision. I move to postpone Original Ordinance Number 2004 until the November fifth, 2019, to allow time to complete the easement and quick claim deeds.
Second.
Okay, that also has been, that motion has been made, it's been seconded for postponement. Anyone has any questions or comments about postponement on the council? Anyone in the public? Okay, let's vote on the, roll call on the postponement.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
McKinney, absent? Weaver?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway? That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, your honor.
Okay, so that motion passes, postponed till the fifth of November. Next item is item number thirteen, and that's Councilor Pierce.
Okay, I move that city council approve the application for a new bar and grill license, number BG-nine, to Accomplice Laramie LLC, EBA Accomplice Micro Pub, located at 301 East Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, for the licensing term October 16, 2019, through May 7, 2020, with issuance contingent upon receiving a full certificate of occupancy and food license, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
It's been moved in second, city clerk Bartholomew.
Thank you, mayor and council. The application before us tonight is for Accomplice Laramie LLC, doing business as Accomplice Micro Pub. The application was received in the city clerk's office on September 18th. They're located at 301 East Grand Avenue. We have reviewed the application, and it does appear to be complete, as well as we've sent it to the liquor division for review, and they've deemed it complete as well. They are still in construction. They were hoping to be done by tomorrow. So, we have received a letter from them stating that their new opening date would probably be November 18th. What, in approving the application tonight, what that would allow us to do is have it approved and ready to go upon receipt of that certificate of occupancy and the food license. Then, we go in for one final inspection, make sure things are the way that the floor plan was indicated to us, and then we can issue the licenses at that time. They do plan to have my, the Accomplice Micro Pub on one side of the building and the Good Egg on the other side. Both are owned by Accomplice Laramie LLC. With that, mayor and council, I do want to note that this is number eight of our available bar and grill licenses.
Two to go, right?
Two to go.
Okay, any questions for our city clerk regarding this license? I have one. Now, obviously, Accomplice and the Good Egg are going to be separated, and the Good Egg, I understand, is going to be more breakfast, lunch, or there, is there going to be alcohol served in the Good Egg portion of the building?
Since the owner of both are the same and they are in the same address location, alcohol can be on both sides. There isn't, there's no wall separating the two locations. Our applicant is, one of our applicants is here, Greg Grisham, so if you have any questions, he can give you more detail.
Well, it's just, just curious, it's nothing that affects the license. Any, any other questions, comments from the council?
One thing I would just note, on a bar and grill license, it does require the licensee to serve sixty percent food, and, and then, you know, they can serve more than sixty percent food, but they can't go under that in their food versus alcohol sales.
Okay, we're going to start with Councilor Doherty and then Councilor Weaver.
I just wanted to say, I peeked my head in, and Greg told me what was going on, and I think he's really doing a good job with renovating that building, and I appreciate that that's going to improve our downtown, so.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, my question is whether or not I'm correct in assuming that the way the bar and grill licenses are a portion to the city is they're, they're, they're both set and capped by population for bar and grill and all liquor license in general, but including bar and grill, isn't that correct, Mr. Mayor? That's?
Well, you're correct. We, we have a limited number of bar and grill and have a limited number of full liquor license, but the restaurant liquor license, they may, there may be a limit, but nobody knows what that is. Do we have a limit on the number of restaurant liquor licenses?
Restaurant licenses are unlimited. However, the retail and the bar and grill are set by population.
I see, I see. Did I say restaurant when I meant bar and grill, probably?
Well, anyway, we're, we're at capacity with the retail full licenses, and we have two bar and grill remaining for whoever wants to apply. Okay, good questions. Anything else regarding this? Anything from the public? Well, any other, anything else from the council before we go to the vote? Do we have roll call?
Stalder?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
McKinney, absent? Weaver?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, your honor.
All right, thank you. All right, good luck to you. Look forward to it.
I don't know if I should get up again or not, but thank you. We're really looking forward to being part of it.
All right, thank you. The next item we have is item number fourteen, Vice Mayor Gabriel.
Thank you, mayor. I would move to approve Original Ordinance Number 2005 on first reading to establish the Laramie Fire Department as the sole provider of emergency ambulance services within the city limits.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second by Councilor Pierce and our city attorney, Bob Suther.
Mayor and council, I think it's fairly well-laid out on the cover sheet. This closes a, if you will, loophole, as we've taken decades to establish our EMS, EMS services in Laramie. The last danger pointed out to us by consultants is that other ambulance services could come in and try to skim the cream off the top. How they do it, I'm not sure, but offering those services to particular insurance plans, to particular classes of people, and that would reduce our, the, the funding that's available to us for EMS, and it would hurt our entire system, and it would hurt the city. So, this ordinance says that the only emergency medical, ambulance services, emergency medical transport that can operate in the city is by the Laramie Fire Department.
Any questions for our city attorney? Councilor Doherty?
If someone's being transported from Iverson down to, down to Colorado for specialist services, can they still get the rehab center vehicle?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
We, and we have a, a separate and, and, you know, in-depth agreement with Iverson on how they use our services, how they bill insurance, and then how much of that is remitted back to us.
Anyone else? Any questions? Anything from the public? Back to the council. Roll call?
Gabriel?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
McKinney, absent? Harrington.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero no's, and one absent, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. So, that item passes on to second reading, and next item that we have is item number fifteen, which is Councilor Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Two Thousand Nineteen-Dash-Seven-Two, authorizing submission of a CW-SRF application to the State Loan and Investment Board for Laramie Wastewater Treatment Plant upgrades in an amount not to exceed nine million five hundred thousand dollars, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by couns, by Councilor, uh, Pierce and Brooks Webb. If you'd like to introduce this to us.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, so this project, uh, is basically, uh, replacing some, some old and worn-out equipment, um, or adding some equipment and building a building to house it all in. Currently, there are six blowers out at the site. These blowers force water into the aeration process and the oxidation ditches. Um, these are large pieces of equipment. They're all about thirty years old and reaching the end of their useful life. They're currently stored in two separate buildings. One of those buildings is, will be either demoed as part of this project, or after the project, it's, it's old and dilapidated. So, this is moving all those blowers into the same building. Uh, also, as part of the project, we'll be adding, uh, full plant, uh, power generation. We currently don't have that. If the power goes down, the plant does not fully operate. A recent, uh, Homeland Security, uh, report identified that as one of our, uh, weaknesses, and we, and, and number one priority for resiliency. So, we're rolling that into this project. The, the Clean Water State Revolving Fund loan, uh, is basically a thirty-year loan for the nine point five million. It's a twenty-five percent loan forgiveness, two-point-five percent interest rate. The, uh, generator portion of it is about two million dollars, just under two million dollars, and we're hoping that will qualify for a green project because that'll be, uh, natural gas-fired and won't run on fossil fuels. Uh, and that, being a green project, gives us a zero percent interest rate on that portion of the project. Uh, the project is consistent with the approved budget and the state intended use plan. Uh, the project's included in our ten-year financial plan, so the, it's already included in the user fees, and, and, uh, user fees will not need to be increased for this project. So, what you've got in front of you is a resolution authorizing us to put that application package together for the State Loan and Investment Board, and, uh, we've got till, uh, November Eighteenth to turn that in. We've already kind of started compiling it because it's a long process, and this just authorizes, this resolution, uh, authorizes us to submit that. Questions?
Councilor Weaver, and then Councilor Doherty.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, in light of that interesting presentation we had at the beginning of the meeting tonight, and then, uh, looking at the substantial figures included here for the loan, um, that we'll be applying for, uh, nine million dollars, and I understand, as you explained, uh, Mr. Webb, that two million of that is for the power generation, the backup, the redundancy portion. But I, I just want to ask a little bit about this. We do a fairly low amount of water treatment compared to what maybe some other municipalities do, in, in terms of treating their water for, for human consumption. That's, that's my understanding. Is that correct? Or is this for sewer? This is only for wastewater?
Mayor, Councilor Weaver, this is wastewater.
This is only for wastewater?
Correct, yes.
Okay. All right, well, then, I'm just thinking water, water on the brain.
Wastewater, wa- wastewater. This is always water.
All right, thank you so much.
Councilor Doherty?
Uh, I have a question. Um, is the natural gas being generated at our water treatment plant? Because otherwise, it is fossil fuels.
Yeah, no, it's, it'll, it's, it's piped into the facility. It's not being generated there currently.
Is that a possibility?
That may be a possibility in the future. It's not something that's on the horizon right now, um, but, uh, possibly in the future.
Councilor Stalder?
So, you said that the, this won't have any effect on the utility rates, um, but in the cover sheet, it says the impact is already being considered into the cost of service. Can you estimate, like, what that looks like per consumer? Or household?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, that, I mean, I can't, right now, I can't put together what that nine point five million breaks out to, or is...
Sorry.
I mean, it's, no, that's fine. It's, it's part of the, it's part of the, it's been part of the ten-year financial plan, so, um, as, as the rates were established, that was taken into consideration, and, and, I'm sure it can be broken down, but I don't have, I don't have that for you tonight.
Any other questions? Council, Vice Mayor Gabriel? I'm sorry, who?
Maybe Malia wants to...
Okay. Yeah, let's hear from...
Uh, Mayor, Council, uh, Councilwoman Stalder, I, I think the, the thing is, is we kind of look at a big approach of where our rates are, and so, on our financial plan, we loaded the debt into this, uh, model, and so, we just want to make sure that our coverage, we have to have coverage of twenty percent debt. So, when we loaded this, this was probably actually, um, budgeted last year, and so, it's in, that's why it's probably in our, it's in our rate analysis of what, and we didn't have rate structure. So, what we do with the financial plan is pretty much, you go up and down on your financial plan, um, you use cash based on reserves so that you don't go up, have high rates, low rates, you average out what your rates are based on your cash flows. Um, I think that the way, uh, it works, I mean, to know how much that is, our, our probably capital in the sewer fund is probably, um, just, and I'm not, because this is a loan, so it's in our debt, it's not in our capital. Our capital's probably about six million a year that we're supported based on the current rates. Um, rates, when we're looking at rates, we're looking at overall how much, based on the cost of service, and, um, you know, how, how things are done on fixed or, uh, capital and some of the operations. I, I believe that this year, based on just the amount of projects and things we have, we're kind of update our financial plan, um, over the six to ten years in the, in those funds, and we'll be looking at rates. I believe we'll probably have some slight increases, but it's not, we have got to a point where we have leveled off our rates, and we're just trying to do, uh, in fact, we didn't have rate increases the last two years. So, if we do, it'll probably be a slight rate increase, just because of the number of projects going up. We have, you know, the whole sewer on Reynolds and a lot of things, and we try to manage the debt and manage the stuff, but how, what piece of that is, that's not how we kind of operate. We operate on the totality of this, and then look at, this is what our cost is to run this operation, and, and what services, um, there is a rate, people that go in and look at the, the consumer rates and actually decide that, but to give you the actual, we can, we can try to go back and look at that, but that's kind of how it works. Did I answer the question?
It did, yeah, I was just...
Okay.
Through you, Mayor, just more of a point of curiosity, you know, what these capital projects kind of are reflected, you know, in our utility rates.
Okay. Did I have anyone before Councilor Harrington? Councilor Harrington, oh, Vice Mayor Gabriel, and then Councilor Harrington.
Brooks, could you expand a little bit about the Honeywell Corporation currently evaluating energy savings? Could you expand a little bit on that?
Sure. Honorable Mayor, City Council, so Honeywell is currently doing, as part of their contractor, working on an investment-grade audit for the wastewater treatment plant specifically, and, and over, overall for the plant, but also more specifically on this project. And so, is what they'll be looking at, um, is the types of blowers that get put in, and, and what that energy cost savings can be. We know, I mean, right off the bat, we know it's new equipment, so it's, it's most likely more energy-efficient, but they'll be looking at the different types of systems, and, uh, the controls and the wiring, um, to make those as efficient as possible. Um, and they'll, and through that investment-grade audit, they'll be showing us a, they'll be showing us what that savings is from our current operation to, to the, to the future operation with the new equipment in place and the new controls in place.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilor Harrington?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I was curious about the useful life of the new equipment, but I see it addressed here in, in the cover letter. I missed it earlier.
Okay. Councilor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That first question was a swing and a miss, but I do have a question about this because you mentioned that the, um, I'm not sure if you called it an audit from Homeland Security, and that prompting, uh, our staff's attention and needing to have that backup power system. I wonder, is that the type of thing that is then figured into our insurance rates, whether or not we have a system like that in place or not, through, uh, Warm or whatever type of insurance the city has to carry? I know sometimes our processes and equipment can have an impact on that. Curious if that does. I'm seeing some shaking heads back there from some of the admins, so, I guess not.
Uh, Mayor and Council, no, I'm not aware of Warm ever taking into account that backup power as, uh, something that would buy down our premium, so to speak.
All right, well, Mr. Mayor, that seems like the kind of question we don't really want to find out the answer to if it's in the negative, so, I appreciate it, thank you. If it's positive.
Any other questions? Anything from the public? Counsel, anything else? Councilor Schuster?
Thank you. I'll make a comment because they were talking about their backup generation, so this is what I deal with every single day. A, you have basically two types of generation. When you have an independent situation, you have diesel, or you have natural gas, or compressed natural gas. Some people call it CNG. Since we have those engines out there and work on them, and let students train on them, I will tell you, as in between the two, the compressed natural gas is so much more cleaner because it has no carbon in, in the fuel. So, what you are doing is going to, in actual pollution, if we have to run it, will be far less than what a diesel generator would be doing.
Thank you. All right. Do we have roll call?
Weaver.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
McKinney, absent. Harrington.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero no's, and one absent, Your Honor.
Okay, so that item passes, and, uh, the application will be forwarded then to the State Lands and Investment Board. All right, the next item is item number sixteen, Councilor Doherty.
I move to award a professional services, service agreement for the completion of the citywide utility ser- survey to Northline GIS in the total amount of one hundred eighteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars and zero cents, plus a contingency of twenty-one thousand two hundred fifty dollars and zero cents, for a total amount not to exceed one hundred forty thousand dollars and zero cents, along with budget amendment of one hundred forty thousand even, to be transferred from the water and wastewater reserve funds to the project, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilor Schuster, City Engineer Jab.
Your humble mayor, uh, members of council, uh, kind of before I dive into this project, I wanted to give you an update of where our current maps are. Uh, so, we currently have some really accurate paper maps. Unfortunately, those were all drawn in the eighties. Um, we've gone through and we've updated those over the years the best we can, drawing on those records. You know, if we change a water line, we'll put a red line down a road, or something like that, but that is difficult to transfer to everybody in the city, you know? Engineering has a great copy, I know Utilities has a copy, but sometimes all our records don't, um, coincide with that. Also, as new development comes in, it's very difficult to add that new development into those maps. So, that information, a lot of times, is taped to a back of that map book of an ASBILT or something like that, so it's very difficult to use. Uh, we do have digital maps. Unfortunately, our digital maps are not the most accurate, um, and they lack several key pieces of information in those, like pipe material, pipe size, things like that. So, uh, those were done several, several years ago, and just also lacking quite a bit of information. So, that really leads us to this project. This project will be updating those maps that city staff uses day in and day out. Uh, basically, Northline, with the assistance of AVI for surveying, will, uh, go out with survey-grade accuracy, uh, survey every water valve, every hydrant, every sewer manhole, basically anything they can really find on that surface. Then they're going to go and comb through all the city's ASBILTS, and all our old records, and everything else that contain all the line types, sizes, pipe material, things like that, and they're going to take all that information and enter it into a new GIS database. Um, this is going to allow, uh, city staff to produce accurate utility maps, um, to provide engineers, to provide our contractors. Uh, this can be used for capital improvement projects, and also development projects as people are asking for information as they move forward with the projects. Um, this also will help, um, our Public Works Division manage our assets, along with, um, pre- providing better maps for the utility division, that they're going to be using day-to-day, and also in our locating services. Really, this project will improve the efficiency for everyone who works with the city's water and sewer systems. With that, I recommend you approve this agreement to Northline GIS, and I can answer any questions you may have regarding this project.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilor Pierce?
I don't have any questions. I have a comment, if we want to go there.
Just the comments after we go through questions. I have one question. Once this, um, company has brought up, everything up digitally where it's, it's available to us, um, and we can get away from the tech, technology of the eighties, is this something that you can update with your staff, or do we have to bring the consultant back in to update the GIS and, and for our records? Because obviously, there will be changes yearly that we need to update locations and, and new lines, and et cetera. Is this something the staff can keep up to date, or are we going to have to continue to rely upon outside firms?
Uh, your humble mayor, members of council, our hope is that staff will maintain this. So, um, the, the big task that's ahead of us is, it's just, it's such a backlog, it's such a large area that that is, it's difficult for staff to take that on, um, and, and do that, but as the map gets updated, um, we will have more, there won't be as big of an update going on. It will be, as a capital, and pro, as the projects we move forward, we can update just that line for those few blocks, or as a new development comes in, we can just update that line, so it's not quite as large of a task, so we should be able to handle that through staff.
All right, thank you. Councilor Pierce?
I do have a question. Um, is the Monolith Ranch going to have any piece be part of this at all?
Uh, your humble mayor, uh, Councilor Pierce, um...
I don't know where to...
At this time, we don't really have anything in the Monolith Ranch included in that. Um, this is more for the, the sewer and water lines that are in, are in the street systems and, and things like that.
Counsel, Councilor Stalder?
Um, so, we're looking at a hundred and forty thousand dollar budget amendment, and the bid was for a hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and seventy, so that's nearly a twenty percent contingency. Is that normal, or are there, like, factors that make it such a variable cost?
Uh, your humble mayor, Councilor Stalder, uh, that was something I requested. When you go into these projects, there's a lot of unknowns that can come up. Uh, we try to work with the consultant, giving them as much information as they put the price proposal together. Um, we try to anticipate anything that may come up. However, with these type of projects, in past experience, there seems to be a lot of unknowns that can come up, um, and then, this project is very, moving forward very fast. Um, we're trying to have this done by next summer. That's a lot of surveying, and actually, we have our kickoff meeting if this is approved tomorrow, and stuff, so our consultant is ready to get in there and try to get as much surveyed as they can before the weather turns, and it's, makes it more difficult for surveying. So, that's just to kind of really, and try to account for any of the unknowns. Um, you never know if you get in there, there's more information that we may need to find, we need to gather, that we didn't know, things like that, and just having that extra contingency helps with that, to help the project moving forward.
Thank you.
Councilor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Mayor, as I was looking through the supplemental, supplemental material provided by Northline for us to look through, yeah, and read through this, and I assume this was one of the strongest factors in, uh, this, um, group being chosen for this project. AVI, this is a quote from their information, "AVI is familiar with the city of Laramie's survey control points, as we have utilized the local control on several projects over the last five years." Were they, um, the only, or at least among the, uh, the few of the seven that we received that had that level of experience working with our system in Laramie?
Uh, your humble mayor, Councilor Weaver, uh, there is several qualified... Your humble mayor, Counsel Weaver, there are several qualified firms that applied for this project. They weren't the only ones. There was, there were several that were very well qualified that could have done this work. Northline, with their proposal, their past experience is one of the reasons why they were selected. They, this is one of Northline's main tasks. This is what they do, is they, you know, this is, these projects are not something, you know, towns see very common, but it is a common problem facing many towns. And Northline, one of their main duties is they go in and they create these maps for municipalities.
And I understand, Mr. Mayor, that our staff usually has a kind of a decision-making matrix that they apply when they use these. I just noted that piece of information, so I thought I'd ask about it. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Anything from the public? Counsel Pierce, you had a comment?
No, I just think this is great. This is good. This is important. Yay.
All right, any, any other comments or cheers from council? Roll call?
Gabriel?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stalder? Sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Shumway?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Okay, so that item also passes. Next item is item number 17, Counsel Pierce.
Oh, hang on. Let's see, I move to award the professional services agreement. Ready?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I move to award the professional services agreement for the design of the Reynolds Sanitary Sewer designed to Trihydro Corporation of Laramie, Wyoming in the amount of $469,349 plus a contingency of $46,935 for a total amount not to exceed $516,284 and amend the fiscal year 2019 wastewater capital construction budget by transferring $86,284 from the wastewater fund reserved to the project and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
It's been moved in second by Counsel Schuster.
Honorable Mayor, members of city council, item before you, it addresses an issue that we've been dealing with on the northeast portion of Laramie. As you probably know, there's some developments that have been delayed due to capacity concerns with the Reynolds Sanitary Sewer main. This main services a large portion of the north side of, of Laramie, and there are a couple of bottleneck areas that have been identified, and staff has delayed development due to those bottlenecks. And this, this project in particular will, has been on the, on the horizon for the city of Laramie and has been expedited due to these concerns at this time, and we are looking to evaluate the system. And the cover sheet says from Fourth Street to the eastern boundary, we will evaluate all the way to the tie-in at Second Street where this ties in. The expectation is that the improvements will be Fourth Street to the east, but we will evaluate to ensure that we aren't not being short-sighted by two blocks. There, the city did go out for RFQ, we received our proposals on July 13th. We had two firms submit proposals for this, Sunrise Engineering and Trihydro. They, after reviewing the proposals and interview, interviews of each consultant, staff selected Trihydro as the proposed consultant for this project, and with that, I can take any questions you may have.
Questions? You mentioned that there had been some projects delayed in, in the northeast portion of town. Is that the case at this time?
There's some proposed developments that have not been fully submitted or have not been moved upon because of the capacity concerns within this sanitary sewer.
Okay, during the construction along Reynolds, is there going to be periods in which there will not be services to this area?
No, there will, there will be services maintained at all times. There's, we utilize bypass pumping, different options like that to maintain our, our services.
So our capacity is nearing the point where we need to oversize and to increase the capacity, but it's not, it hasn't reached the point to where we are beyond what is recommended for this, for the lines at this time?
There are a couple of sections of the, the line that are flatter sections of the, the sanitary sewer, and these do, these do near and I would have, I don't have all of the data in front of me, but there are times where it does exceed the DEQ recommendation, so that is why we are, you know.
Any other questions for staff? Anything from the public? Any comments from council? Roll call?
Harrington?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Okay. Next item is item number 18, Counsel Stalder.
I move to approve the reimbursement for Timberline subdivision in the amount of $202,331.41, along with a budget amendment transferring $44,155.20 from water fund reserves, $13,172 from wastewater fund reserves, and $145,004.21 from general fund reserves.
Second. It's been moved in second by Counsel Schuster. Mr. Milliken, right?
Yeah, correct.
Eric?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, the Timberline subdivision final plat was approved by City Council in March 2017. Since that time, it has been completed and inspected by our Public Works Inspector and has been found to meet our standards that we've set as an engineering division. As part of the subdivision process, before the developer starts building, they sign a subdivision agreement with the city of Laramie. As part of that agreement states that in the event that developers require to construct improvements that benefit subsequent developers, the original developer is entitled to proportionally reimbursed, to be proportionally reimbursed for the cost of those improvements. Also, in UDC, in the Unified Development Code, the UDC, it states how exactly the city reimburses the developer when we ask them to upsize for future development. In this case, it's, the UDC states that for water and sewer lines, whatever the minimum required amount the subdivision needs is their requirement. So the city asks as a minimum eight inch, but if the developer also needs an eight inch, that is their minimum line that they need. However, if the engineering division feels that the development, that further development around the subdivision will occur and there needs to be a larger line, we can ask the developer to construct a larger line and we will pay them the cost difference between their minimum and our upsizing request. Excuse me. For pavement oversizing, we usually ask developer to design a, or to construct a local road, and that's what, usually what subdivisions do. However, for the Urban Systems Advisory Committee has stated that, or not stated, they've, in their master street plan, they've, they've said that the Huron Street is a minor arterial, which in our city of Laramie standards is a 100-foot right-of-way. And so the Unified Development Code says that when we ask the developer to oversize a roadway, they're entitled to 60s, yep, 66% or they're, they're entitled of 34% reimbursement from us for the pavement cost, and they would be responsible for 66% of the cost. And the, also, sorry, excuse me, as part of the Timberline, as part of the subdivision agreement and as part of the UDC, we ask that the, that the developer go out to public bid and to bring forth all cost proposals to the city council and to, and to have the city council choose and agree to the terms of the oversized reimbursement agreement. However, city staff believes that the, city staff believes that the, that this, the code is outdated regarding reimbursement and oversizing, and we're currently in the process of developing a new code that will be more beneficial for the city and the developer in the future. And, and final, the water reimbursement will be $44,000 approximately, the sewer reimbursement will be $13,000, and the cost for the arterial street reimbursement will be $145,000. Thank you.
Any questions? Anything from the public? Any comments from the council? Counsel Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just appreciate that breakdown. That was excellent, and thank you, Mr. Milliken.
Anything else? Roll call?
McKinney?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
All right, that item passes. So that concludes the items on the regular agenda. We now move back to public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and make comments at this time? All right, seeing that, we'll close the public comment period, and now we move to the council. Are there any future work session topics that you would like us to consider?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counsel Weaver?
As we've looked at some of the issues that have come up with plats and proposals for how the city's growing east of town, a couple of council members and I have talked about if it might not be good to think about putting on our work session schedule a discussion or informative session about developing a new type of overlay zoning for residential development as it expands eastward, if it expands eastward. That may be addressed in updates to the CAP plan, but it may, it may still warrant some expanded discussion. I don't know what the level of support for that is, but it's something that's just come up in, in a natural way in conversation as we've had some of these projects come forward.
Would, would your suggestion be to reevaluate the Casper Aquifer overlay zone and also look at other areas that we have not designated as overlay?
Right, as, as, as we grow that direction and into that, I wonder if we might not look at things that we may want to add in light of new information, but it may be covered in the CAP update.
Okay.
I don't know.
So you'd want to have staff bring to us an evaluation of the
It's
impact on the aquifer?
Correct, and it's possible the staff may able, may be able to just tell me now that that's probably something that would be rolled into that update.
Yeah, we'll give them time to do that and see, see how that can be presented to us.
Sure.
Is that okay with council for the
Satisfies me.
On that, okay? Any other items for us for future consideration? Okay, so the next item that we have is
Meetings.
No, I think we're, we thought we're future council work sessions that we've talked about. Next thing is item number 21, which is Counsel Pierce.
Okay, I move that we adjourn to executive session regarding personnel, Wyoming statute 16 dash four dash 405, small letter A, Roman numeral number 10.
Second.
I moved in second that we adjourn into executive session. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned and right now, the